Since our last meeting, I had the pleasure to be on vacation from the state of that for renewal. I can tell you that it was a big adjustment. However, I do want to mention that this evening we had a presentation by the vice president of the county. He will bring some information to us regarding the Somerset County Library in the end. During that occasion, that discussion with our agreement. That's it? Karen Ward?
Yes. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the opening of the Mary Close Park in Mount Brook that was hosted by a Mount Brook student back there at the community health. It was a wonderful event, and I'm hopeful, I remain optimistic, that we can see some improvement in the quality of the water. I'm finding that the trade school letter law is going to be in harm, and school work coming in is very low. And that's what we're seeing.
That's where I got the question. I had a guy in Florida who did some studies on commonwealth, they're all part of the membership. People were trying, pretty successful. Future week, the U.S. page research journal will provide patients with a important course in the polar, as far as more sports development, those who are part of labor, Americans, and people on three floor base, please on September 23rd. This is a great download of the trade dispute between the US and China. Our opinion for the demolition of two pools in Panama, which may actually destroy us under $47,000, which is considered really good. The details are under review, and we can expect to see a final resolution probably our next conference. During heavy rain, flooding up to the curb levels occurs on Brown Road in the vicinity of Carteret. Several years ago, we did a Brown Road Phase One project to fix the problem of flooding within the home on Brown Road. The administration estimates that Phase Two project would address $500,000 and possibly not fix the problem anyway. We can expect to hear more from residents on this issue at some future meeting. Planning board continues to hear testimony on plans for 71,000 square foot four-story choice hotels and 11,000 square foot garden school on the 22th Memorial Lane. The hotel was actually approved some 20 years ago when the Houlihan Restaurant was built, and the hotel construction fell through, but the township allowed the restaurant to be built. Nice job on the road work on Garrett's and working, that road trade, that third lane is going to be really helpful.
Hey. Dr. Rosa?
I did a survey of the specialty county of our community. I'd like to comment briefly on a program that I've mentioned before, but it's relevant again in light of the recent shootings that occurred over the weekend. I'm giving advocate with the on point program, which as you sure know, as I spoke about many times before, and on point is a program utilized in another county is Stafford Township in Bushen County, where the police department partners with a social worker program. So, and the police become aware of individuals who may have underlying problems, whether they struck alcohol, whether they're delinquent, whether they have court issues. Police may not be able to handle the broad underlying issues, but they know the people who need that help the most. And what Stafford Township has done, with all the success, our social workers with the police department, way that provides proactive outreach to people in need and head off policy American, American money, the duty for here and last year, and spoke about their successes, which included getting rid of public safety and health issues because of unsanitary conditions of homes. They had an incident where they got out of the house, so they don't save a person, but work with the social workers and police department. And of course, they have a lot of drug alcohol related issues, and people into programs that they need proactively rather than make yourself or these new police. They know the people. So, I remain hopeful that we will continue to maybe start exploring this township this year or next year. And if it's on this program, there's a lot of other counties that have other type of innovative community policing with social workers and different programs on points on the right fit for Bridgewater. There's a lot of programs out there that other counties, you don't need to be meant to be able to be concealed, but I guess, so hopefully we'll continue to look at that a little farther. That's all for the board.
Just two things. One, an update on the construction on Mountainside Lane. We did send a letter to all the residents saying that construction was going to begin the last week in July. The contractor did not mobilize at that time. We had trouble reaching him. We just got contact on him late today. He's going to start on August 12th. Send another note out already, just letting them know that the local aid was on the contractor's end, but they will be mobilizing the end of this week and start again on September 12th. And then tomorrow night is the national night out, so the place will be here celebrating with the community. There's also some people waiting tomorrow night, so it's really tight parking, but everyone is welcome. There should be parking in some of the...
That's it?
Okay. Do your presentation this evening. Council still has things to put on, and this is certainly an important topic of the county. So, with the library, with the county library, right? Start.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Christopher Kornowski, and I'm the director of Public Services for the Somerset County Library System of New Jersey. One of our 10 facilities across 180 miles of library service in the county is the Bridgewater Bridge, which is what brings me to address the council this evening and to share some background information on the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act. This is a construction bond act that is made available from the State Library of New Jersey, and I will do my very best to condense two years of work into three or four minutes here for this evening. I think it's important to share with the council a bit of history on this construction bond act. On November 7th of 2017, the voters of New Jersey, by a 60 to 40 vote in the affirmative, and I have to read some of this, excuse me, because it's dead, approved the issuance of $125 million in general obligation bonds for construction or reconstruction of public library buildings in the state. The purpose of this bond act was to improve New Jersey's public libraries in order to ensure the well-being and the success of all residents in the state who use libraries. So, this will turn out to be a competitive grant program that will be administered by the State Library of New Jersey. Grants will be made available to municipal townships or boroughs, and grant monetary awards will be given to set borough or townships to improve library facilities in the state. The State Library has defined three specific areas in which a borough or township may apply for a construction grant. Those three lines within the grant process are general construction needs, which would include an updating or a revision of a branch library, or the building of a new branch library. It would include, number two, it would include a major building repair, which would be defined as a new roof or a new HVAC system. Number three would be updates to ADA, the American Disabilities Act, and access to those library users who needed to fall under the issuance of ADA. So, three, three options are available for this grant. If a township or borough decided to move forward within the grant process, the council would be responsible for 50% of the matching funds award. So, quickly, if a hypothetical $10,000 grant was awarded, the municipality would be responsible for $5,000 in terms of a grant match in partnership with the state. So, how do you pay for that? The local governing body can bond for the match or part of the match, and will need to provide a resolution of their intent to bond. If the grant application is approved or funding, the township will have to show proof that they have bonded in the form of a bond ordinance. So, that brings up the issue of the HVAC system at the Bridgewater Bridge, which is my understanding, I've been with the organization for a year and a half, has been somewhat problematic for the last several years in terms of its cooling component. So, I bring this forward to the council because the last time that the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act was approved by voters was in 1998. So, this really is a once-in-a-generation opportunity for the council to potentially consider partnering with the Somerset County Library System to go forward with this grant. There is a need in terms of pre-grant work for an American Institute of Architects, AIA, member firm, to provide an engineering HVAC study to review the existing mechanical equipment at the Bridgewater Bridge. The study is in response to this pre-grant requirement, and this study would have to be paid with approval by the township. The project objective for that mechanical study is to provide a written report documenting the age, the condition, and anticipated replacement cost of the mechanical equipment for the HVAC system. There are some notes of caution that I want to fully ensure the council is aware of, in that on May 1st, the State Library distributed a quick turnaround survey, which closed on May 17th. That survey identified over 170 potential construction projects for public libraries across the state totaling $370 million anticipated dollars in grant asks. Keeping in mind that there is only $125 million, quote unquote, in the bank, what that means is that certainly not every construction project put forward within a grant application process will be funded. Additionally, on May 30th, the draft library construction bond regulations were officially received by the Office of Administrative Law on a timeline appropriate for publication on July 1st. July 1st of this year marked a 60-day public comment period, which will then be followed by a 30-day response time, which will then be followed by the actual publication of the grant application itself late this year, with the anticipation that the grant application will be submitted officially to the State Library for review by a seven-member blue ribbon panel, who in consultation with the president of Thomas Edison University and the State Library of New Jersey, will decide the grant awards, which will then be sent to the state legislature. So, my whole involvement in this process is to potentially work with you, the township of Bridgewater, on obtaining a successful grant award and discussing options for a potential replacement of a needed HVAC system at the Bridgewater Bridge. So, I thank you for your time and attention this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You have an estimated cost?
The question that everybody wants to know, of course, is the estimated cost. The estimated cost will not come until the mechanical engineering study is complete. So, that pre-grant mechanical study has to be done first before they are able to determine an overall cost recommendation for the project.
Well, they can't tell us how much the cost for the HVAC is going to be.
I do not have that information. I don't know if there's anything from...
Yes, I think I can add a little depth to what Chris has provided. So, the system itself, as the council knows, the branch is power. We own the building, we're responsible for the technical system within the building. The, when the original library was built, there was a chiller to handle the services of that building. When the library was expanded, there were air handlers that were added, but the second chiller was not added. So, there are 10 air handlers and one chiller, and they have difficulty keeping up with the very... We received a number of complaints, you know, well before even Chris came around, from the residents and staff, and it stuck in their, you know, very hot days. Some days that the libraries even had to close because of the heat, the extreme heat we saw this year. So, the system is really, that exists, is on its last legs. So, what Chris is talking about, the grant, presents an opportunity for us to really get a new HVAC system at 50% discount, state 50%, and plus state 50%. We don't know what the cost of that system will be. We do know what the cost of the mechanical study will be, that's $6,000. So, we agreed to provide the funds for that through the existing library budget, which we have, so we're going to do that. They should get that done, so we can come back and give you what the cost estimate is before we buy the grant, which would get, hopefully, the 50% match.
So, from a, from a timing standpoint, in terms of, I know this right now is informational for the council, but at some point, there's decisions that the council is going to have to, decision points, council. So, right now, administration's already moving forward with a study that will come back and tell us the new HVAC system is going to cost us...
That's correct.
...next number of dollars.
Right.
After that happens, what's the next, theoretically, what's the next step? How the bonding ordinance?
Well, the next step is we'll have to decide to submit the grant. If the council is in agreement to submit the grant, then Natasha will give you all the necessary, you know, how we're going to fund it, how we will fund all 50%. You'll get all that information and then decide moving forward, whether you want to proceed with that.
So, you'll have all that information. Right, okay. And you should attend to bond.
And then along with the letter of intent to the state of the...
If you get, if you're, if the council awarded the...
Correct.
In the running, you can do a test part.
Yeah, so, I want to be exactly correct of this. So, the local governing can bond if you were awarded the grant and you were of mind to pay for the 50%. The local governing body can bond for the match or part of the match, and will need to provide a resolution of their intent to bond to the State Library. If the grant application is approved for funding, the township will have to show proof that they have bonded in the form of a bond ordinance.
I guess my, maybe jumping ahead from where we are right now, but let's just say theoretically this comes back and it's a hundred dollar, it's more than half of what we expected for now, but yeah. Let's just do that number for right now, and council comes back and says, look, we want to, you know, we want to take advantage of the 50% match, but we're going to fund it cash. We don't have bond. We want to, we decided to work the resources to not have the bonding. We have to bond.
This language that I just read is taken directly from the State Library. I would be happy to research that question and get back to you. Oh, well, sure though, Dave. I mean...
I assume theoretically we're writing a check.
Right.
Or are we getting bonded, funded fully?
Now, would you like to, would it make the letter of intent do the same thing?
I'm just asking in terms of...
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, it's, it's so early in the process that we really kind of...
Right.
You know, we don't have any data to really...
Absolutely not.
We're not really with it. But I just want to understand what the options are in terms of, what Chris was saying is if we have to bond, it may be something now besides, we have no wish to do it at all. Maybe something that we want to do, we want to do it through bonding, and maybe something that we say, we want to do it, but we want to find a way to pay the cash for it, or pay the cash in part of it, or is it not?
I'm, I'm almost positive the state requires that, you know, some type of a commitment, because other people, other towns, not Bridgewater, other towns have signaled their intent, and then, you know, they set aside the money, and then the other town, they're moving forward with their plan. So, I'm sure that...
It sounds like it's reached the end of its useful life.
Yes.
Okay. So, whether it's through a bond, whether through this, or some other way, we have to...
Right. We have looked at other clean energy direct install programs. They are, HVAC is not eligible for those utility grants, and just because of the usage, it's not eligible for clean energy. So, this is an opportunity we probably don't take advantage of.
All right. So, right now, we appreciate the information. We'll wait and see back what the actual estimated cost is, and then we'll come back whenever that is, and...
When will the information come out?
Unknown. We're just, we, Chris just gave us the love quote, which we're going to offer at that this week, so that we can start it. I hope, you know, they'll go relatively quickly and come back, even if not, if not the August 19th, we should, personally, September 1st.
What's the deadline of the file?
So, the draft regulations are open through August 31st. September 1st through September 30th is the 30-day response to queries about the draft. We're looking at the grant application to be published in October. I will have that grant application for 90 days, so probably soon after the new year, the actual grant application will be due to the State Library.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on with the agenda, we have a public hearing on the budget method introduced last week, a motion open to public.
We'll make that motion.
Okay. All favor? Any member of the public that wishes to comment on the amendments to the budget? If you do so now, it'll be public comment for all of the... Okay. Seeing non-motion to close public hearing on the amendment, uh, what?
So...
All favor?
Aye.
So, now we have two votes. One is a vote, the first one is to vote for the amendment to the budget that was introduced at the last week. So, we have a motion on adoption of the budget amendment. We have a second. I'll second it. Roll call vote.
Captain Corvila?
Yes.
Captain Corvila?
I have a brief statement. I've been struggling, Mr. Council President, with this, this budget vote. I think the fact that we're voting on it in August already reflects a little bit of that. I didn't like this budget when it was first brought out before the council. And I tell you, I still don't like it. I think the budget stinks. I think that the spending increases are, are some of these departments, in my, in my opinion, are excessive. End of the day, they reflect very poor management in the township. I think the mayor really just has very lacked fiscal ability to manage this township, but this budget reflects that. And, but I struggle with it because we're in August, right? We have to get a budget passed. The residents need a budget. They deserve a budget. There are some bright, bright notes to the budget. I think that the, there is a tax deduction. I think if this budget, if the, you know, the mayor had managed this better, I think the tax deduction could have been higher, and that upsets me. I'm also very pleased that we are reducing debt. That's a, that's a very positive factor. I think we're almost a million dollars, so, you know, this council has certainly been advocating to the mayor to, to decrease debt for a long time, and this is certainly a very positive movement. End of the day, I'm going to vote in favor of this budget, because unfortunately, we don't have the ability to really do much more. This, the mayor has had a closed-door policy to this council for eight years. I've been on the Budget Finance Committee for many of those years, but we're not allowed to communicate with department heads. This person has been very helpful to, to me over the years in dealing with the budget and most communicated, Mr. Naples. But short of that, the Budget Finance Committee is not allowed to pick up the phone and call department heads. We're not allowed to look into the details of this budget and talk to the department heads to see what is really needed to spend and not needed to spend. And, you know, it's been frustrating, something for me over the years, in dealing with the mayor's office without the court. So, look, reality is, this is Dan Hayes' last year, serving as mayor. We have, certainly have some positive outlook for next year, better communication with whoever may be mayor, and working closer together to really come, come forward with budgets that are fiscally conservative and sound. So, I would have voted in favor, because I think, you know, considering that there is a budget decrease, considering that we are reducing a significant amount, putting a significant, a significant amount away towards debt. Whether positives or minuses, I would have been in favor of voting in favor of this budget. That's a yes.
Captain Corvila?
Yes.
Governor Gallaudet?
Yes.
Governor Gallaudet?
Yes, very briefly to build on what Felice has commented on, I think this budget has, as mandatory, we're really voting on the budget amendment at the moment, but we'll vote on the budget second. But as a whole, I think the budget is approved from what we presented to us by increasing our allocation towards debit payments. I think overall, this budget is responsive to the council's call for years for increased debt and accelerated debit payments, we're doing that here, and we're decreasing taxes. I believe that we, anytime that we can do those things, I think of warrants, yes, vote. I think we can, hope in the future, we can do those things even greater than we're with them now, and I expect that we'll be able to do that next year. But in the meantime, this does increase our payments towards debt, decreases taxes, and I would vote yes. For the adoption, do, you need to do another public session on the budget, some of you did that last time, directed? We did already. Okay. So, now we can vote on the actual budget as adopted. Do you have a motion?
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Roll call vote.
Captain Corvila?
Yes.
Captain Corvila?
Same comments as before, yes.
Captain O'Roote, the name is President Gallagher?
Yes.
President Gallaudet?
Yes. Okay. This point of meeting over to the public, members of public wishing to address the council on any matter will be allowed to speak unless there are initial circumstances. Do we have a motion open to public?
We'll hold it. I'll second it.
All favor? Aye. Okay. Any member wants to come forward? Please do so, and I ask you, please, keep to two minutes. I get in trouble when I allow people to go over. Come on, come on. Say your name and address the record, isn't it?
Linda Brungovic, 20 Towneage Avenue, Mount Brook, New Jersey. So, I just like to thank the council for looking into the matter of the fireworks at the Patriots Ballpark. I'm sure the Eagles and wildlife will be thanking everyone, but also would like to address the human issue as well, and the quality of life issue of having 18. It's almost like an assault, right? The fireworks, they're on schedule this year. There are 18 fireworks scheduled. They begin in April, go through the entire summer, through April. Much of that time, kids are in school. These fireworks happen at, you know, 10:15, 10:30 in the evening, and they're quite loud. I don't know where you all live in relationship to the ballpark, but to say that they're not excessive is not the reality. I know years ago, your council, there was a council, I don't know if he escapes me, but he brought up the excessive. but he brought up the excessive nature of the fireworks at the ballpark. So I would have brought some neighbors with me. I talked to a lot of people, and they have similar views. I'm not sure how the council feels, but it doesn't really matter for this evening. It is an issue. I'm sure that if they were being blown off in Mr. Califer's neighborhood, that Minster would not approve of this at all. I believe he's from Big Minster. So I just want you to look at the human aspect of this as well, and the end quality of life. And, you know, maybe, you know, like, they lose the significance of fireworks. You know, usually it's a celebration and, you know, 4th of July, Memorial Day, special evenings, not two times a week, you know.
I'm going to ask it, but I want to cut to the off, but I'm going to ask you that so I can make sure I'm clear to everybody.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your comments. Really appreciate it.
You just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public wishing to come forward on any matter? For once?
We're going to close, please.
All in favor?
Captain President, I can just provide a little bit of clarification on one thing that Fleet mentioned, and that is, it's my understanding that the policy that we have in terms of reaching out as councilpeople to individual staff members without going through the administration is a policy that came to us previously from previous mayors. So I don't believe it's just the current mayor that has that policy, but I would like to believe that it was a policy when Mayor Flannery was the mayor, was the mayor, and also the mayor down there.
That's fair, and I appreciate that comment. I think that perpetuating that policy toward this is making it a good policy.
I wasn't commenting on the policy. I just wanted to clarify that it was not something brand-new that's happened over the last 30 years.
That's accurate.
Ever since I've been on the council, that's been the policy of the mayor. And certainly, the mayor is entitled to change the policy if he shows.
We've got a 10th public hearing in final action ordinance approving vacating a portion of existing storm drain easement, portion being approximately six feet wide, 157 feet long, rectangular shape, located on Lot 472, Lot 72, known as 675 John Christian Drive in the township of Bridgewater, Somerset County, New Jersey, as shown on the map in topographic survey, 675 John Christian Drive, Lot 72, Lot 472, Township of Bridgewater, Somerset County, New Jersey, as prepared by John Hale, PLS 33525, Stire Associates, PA, dated August 8, 2017. Motion open to the public or comment on this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any member of the public wishing to come forward on this ordinance, which is as it's titled. Vacating a portion of a stormwater easement. Okay, seeing none? Okay, do a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And at the last meeting, when we talked about this, there was a request that notice be given to the resident area. That's been done, I understand?
Yes.
And nobody's had an opportunity to comment?
There was one resident that reached back, asked a question, but it was okay.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
I will say publicly that I visited properly. Looking at the, just wanted to refer to a picture of the easement request and the, if looking at the property, I'm certainly more convinced than anything to support it with the, when you consider the layout of the property with the retention basement in the property that's not usable in the back. I think the, what we're proposing with the easement, I think is a benefit to the residents of the own property and the impact on the easement, drainage, and so forth will be absolutely minimal, if anything. So I intend to support this.
Okay, do the...
I'll make that motion.
I don't have a, I don't have a survey in the packet of the change. Is there a survey?
Yeah, it's a...
I don't have that. It's not in my PDF packet.
Captain Durso?
Okay, do you have a motion and a second? Further questions or discussion? Do you have any questions?
Still want to notify the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Captain Pudella?
Yes.
Captain Durso?
Yes.
Captain O'Rose? Yes. Captain Nalas?
Yes.
President Men?
Okay, 11B, the ordinance, interruption ordinance approving extinguishment of existing access easement as shown on the file map, 2762, in Somerset County Clerk's Office in Santerisure, easement reported in Somerset County Clerk's Office on September 12, 1979, in Depot, 1407, page 47, for property on North Crossing Boulevard, Lot 718, Lot 141.08, 141, and it's .07 and 141.06. Mr. Naples?
As I understand, these are, these date back a while. They were existing easements, Santerisure access, which are no longer necessary when they built the North Crossing Boulevard cul-de-sac that goes off of this road. So we're just closing this out.
Is there something that was asked for it to be? May I assume it's got a radar?
I don't, I don't know what it is, but it could have, it could be the home, home that had the access, that's their home.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a problem with your thinking. I would like to see if we could just, what the, what the impetus is of it. I don't promise, I don't, my name, but... We have a motion to introduce 11A.
How do I have a copy of the survey?
You have 11A. You have 11A. We need a copy.
Yes, 11A.
Yep. We have a second on 11A.
I'll second the introduction.
Okay, roll call vote.
Captain Pudella?
Yes.
Captain Durso?
I'll approve the introduction, but I'm not passing the judge on my final vote.
Captain O'Rose, yes. I said that, Nalas?
Yes.
President Men?
Yes. I have a motion to second for the public hearing.
There's a new final action on said ordinance, will be the 19th of August, 2019, at 7:30 PM here in the House of Representatives.
All right, resolutions. If we could pull out 12A for a second. Does anybody have anything that we need to pull out on 12B through 12H? Okay, seeing none. Do you have a motion? Motion through 12B through 12H. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Are any questions, discussion, further? None? Roll call vote, please.
Captain Pudella?
Yes.
Captain Durso?
Yes.
Captain Nalas?
Yes.
Yes. On 12A, I had a couple of questions. You know, we've been talking in general about issues with the Board of Health and the council serving as Board of Health and so many issues. So one of my questions that I know Councilor Galus has been asking about is for us to look further into this question about council acting as a Board of Health as opposed to having, except for Board of Health. And so my question, as it relates to this resolution, is, you know, can we keep looking for it now until we have time to otherwise vet the issue that Councilor Galus has been asking about? Okay. All right, so do we need a motion to table this, Porzingis? All right, do we motion to table 12A?
I'm moving.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a closed session tonight? Or contract to move to? All right, resolution. Please, the public, as referred to, the council, this body will now hold a closed meeting for this contract negotiations. When it is matters discussed on public record, this will be public at that time. The public is excluded from said meeting per the note of clear route dispensed by law in accordance with Section 848 of the Public Relations Act. Do you have a motion? All in favor? Okay, we will not conduct any other business when we come out of a closed session other than to close the meeting.